Good evening and welcome to the Selectman's Meeting of May 22, 2018. First up is a salute to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Looking to approve the minutes of the May 15 meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 15?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Department head committee chair updates. Seeing none. Old business, we have Whitney Baker of the Mouson Lake watershed. Whitney?
Thank you. Hi, Whitney Baker.
We're gonna have you go to the podium, sorry. And speak to the board.
Hello.
Hi.
The name's Whitney Baker, project manager at York County Soil and Water Conservation District. I'm working right now with Betty Smith. She's the program director over at Acton-Chapley with Conservation Corps. She's working directly with the Mouson Lake Association, Mouson Lake Region Association, I should say. Working to write a proposal to get some funding in order to address some erosion issues, among other things, in the Mouson Lake watershed. York County will be the grantee on the grant if awarded, and working with Acton-Chapley with Conservation Corps with the current YCC to address the sites that were identified in their watershed survey they conducted last summer, 2017. I came in last week and spoke with Selectman Stacy Horn just to answer some questions. I know Betty appeared in front of the board probably about a month ago now. And I really just wanted to come in and answer any questions you had regarding the whole proposal and the grant process, Acton's past involvement in these grants, which is pretty lengthy, all the way back to about 2008 when they started the first round of 319 watershed grants in the watershed. Mouson Lake is kind of a unique story, just to give some background. The DEP's been monitoring Mouson since about '75. In 1997, they determined that the lake was impaired for a variety of water quality impairments. So then started the first round the very next year of these 319 watershed grants with York County Soil and Water. The Acton-Chapley Conservation Corps was not formed then, so it was a combination of efforts by the Conservation District, the town of Acton, and the town of Chapley. These grants are two-year projects, and there was, I believe, three rounds back then of these grants addressing erosion on mostly residential properties throughout the watershed. This money actually started the Youth Conservation Corps, which is now funded by both the towns of Acton and Chapley, as you know. So in 2006, Mouson Lake was taken off of the impaired waters list, which is really rare. It still is eligible for this 319 grant money because it still is on the NPS Priority Watershed List, which the DEP calls it, and it's in the watch list category, which means it could go either way easily. So they're making it eligible for this grant funding to keep up the watershed improvements and continue addressing erosion around the watershed, as has been done in the past. Now, there's a lot of work that goes into being eligible for this stage of the grant process, so Betty Smith at the Acton-Chapley Conservation Corps and the Mouson Lake watershed have funded her efforts in, one, redoing the watershed survey. That was a big effort, took a lot of volunteers. I think they identified 180 sites. Betty went into, I think, more detail about that, her visit to you guys. Then she had to update the watershed management plan, which was fully funded by the Watershed Association, I believe. So that was approved a month ago, maybe a month and a half ago now. And with that approval, you're now eligible for the grant funding. So we're in the middle of writing this proposal now and kind of ironing out all of the moving parts that go into it.
So I guess our dilemma is that we are not allowed to agree to enter a grant without encumbering the town and taxpayers more. How do we?
Yep.
Help you with this grant without doing that?
So Betty came back and told me that. And I know I keep throwing around site list. And what that is, is with the proposal, you have to include what they call candidate site list. And it's a list of sites that could be addressed under the two-year cycle of the grant. It can change. It's not set in stone. But this is something that has to be done with the proposal. So she pulled out just the high-impact, maybe easily-done road sites for both Acton and Chapley as a start. And what I told her with your concerns of, you know, if that's already on our radar, we aren't going to pull extra funds to include the match for those sites. So I suggested meeting with the road commissioners to see if there's anything currently on the agenda that aligns with work that could be done in the watershed, and then we could provide some kind of help on those. I provided a map with your paperwork just because Kim and I were talking about where the watershed is. So that's, the watershed is quite large, it's 24 square miles. Under the grant, it, any erosion site has to be within the watershed is really the only stipulation. The other one is that you have to have an argument that there's a negative impact to water quality. So it can be a ditch where the stormwater then flows downstream into a crossing, into a tributary to Mouson Lake. It doesn't have to be directly on the lake. So it is a pretty large area we're dealing with. And that survey back in 2017, the summer, was the entire watershed. So to answer that question, I thought step one, meet with the road commissioners and see if there's any work they're doing within the watershed that's near any of the tributaries or the lake itself.
That they would be doing anyways?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the grant would, up to a limit, provide funding for the cost of materials, and then the town already doing the work would provide the labor and the equipment. My other thought to that was private roads haven't really been addressed yet through these grants, and I'm trying to find a way into some of the current-going road associations. If they're experiencing erosion issues around the lake, they're definitely eligible for some funding and can, we can work with them under the grant as well.
And one of the, if it's okay, so you saw the email that I sent?
Yes.
I was hoping to get you, you're welcome to contact information, because Mr. Arnold Murray is here in the front row, I wanted you to meet him. This is Whitney Baker, and David Winchell is in the back as well. So I invited them all and gave them a little blurb about the meeting, so hoping they could get together one-on-one and see what she could do to help.
Yeah.
With the current projects and see if you can somehow tie it in. But I'm sure Mr. Murray and Ms. Hart have some roads for you.
I have been involved in these grants before, because we did 319 grants on the Great East Lake, three different sites. And when we did it, it was, the town gave in kind, they let us meet here, and you were granted some kind of...
Provided match.
Yeah, a provided match for, that was your help to these things. And all the work was done on the 319 grants were on the private roads. There were town roads that were mentioned in the Great East Lake watershed survey, but that was up to the town to, that wasn't part of the 319 grants that we got. So I don't know how this is gonna work.
Well, it's all how anyone wants to do it. Volunteer, it's on the regular.
You know, it's different than what, what she's saying is a little bit different than the way we did it. We did it through, well, we did it through power, and you talked to her.
Yeah, I spoke to her today. Yes, I did.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't know, it's a good thing for the lakes, but I don't think really you're gonna be, it's gonna be up to the private roads to get out and do it. And I did, I did my homework, and I went down and, I wanted to show you before we got here. But there is 15, my notes, 15 town roads, I think.
Yep.
15 town roads on the, on the survey they did down there on Mouson Lake, and only three town roads in Acton, in one private road. Aspen Lane is on the thing as a high-impact, high-cost. But the other three roads, I think, I'll talk to Dave about it, but they're, they're far away from, this is the map, there was a high-impact site listed on their thing, which is right down here where Lorraine went off the road, that little pond there, and there's a ditch. That was considered a high-impact site. The other one's down on Sand Barn Road, in that ditch, that water. Well, the outflow from that culvert is up in the air, it's what they call a perched outfit, it's up in the air, so it's running down. That was considered a spot. And the other thing is on Mason Road, that low spot in Mason Road. The only question I had of you is that they're over here, and they're miles and miles away.
Anytime there's direct flow to a water body, whether it's the tributary or directly into the lake, it will read as high-impact on the survey.
It would? I thought high-impact was a direct access, medium was, I thought, when I did the survey on Great East...
Well, it can be the lake or a tributary of, so it can be any stream. Those are, these all are crossings, stream crossings.
Yeah.
Directly next to a crossing.
Like creeks.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Which then flow to Mouson Lake.
Yeah, but I mean, along, well, there's a long way to go to bring something down to those things, because when you're on, you look at these maps I have, they have, they did it by sectors, little sectors.
Yep.
Well, you can pass them around, I don't need them anymore. But the, I think we're pretty good as far as the town of Acton goes, as to, I would support it though, but, I mean, it's very minimal, but good luck. Because it's a good project. We did a lot of...
Yeah, maybe David.
A lot of residential things after we did...
Yep. So also part of this grant is that we have a pot of money that's going to continue to address the residential sites. So Acton-Chapley Conservation Corps is gonna continue that work and have a little bit more to provide some match to folks that are interested in those projects and partnering up under the grant. So there's still, that's a whole task of itself going on for this grant as proposed. And then another task in that is addressing road issues, which really haven't been addressed in the past, it's been mostly residential. So just trying to figure out now how we move forward.
I think the next step would be to have a meeting with the road commissioners to talk about the roads and what their projects will be.
Yep.
Or, you know, could be. To, I mean, I think it's a great opportunity to not pass for the town and the waters. So maybe we'll get an email thread going, or?
Do you want me to send one? Sure.
Yeah.
So I'll contact you, and we'll figure out the best time and see if we can get the guys there for a meeting and...
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Cindy Hart, Road Committee. I just think we should be included in that meeting also, because we've worked on similar things and doing the RSMS sort of keys in.
Thank you.
What's that?
If you want to be there at the meeting.
Yeah, I would like to be there. Cemetery Hobbs Farm.
So, good news, bad news, Lois, you wanna come up? Good news is, I found you some more money.
I know, I can usually.
Yes, you can. All right, so after the conversation last week about the, she'd kind of, they kind of, you know, said, insinuated they needed some more funds to keep up with the, keep up with where they were at, I went to the treasurer. So currently, they have $1,027 left in their account. The only thing that we know that's not accounted for so far is the flag waivers bill, and I actually just got an email from Steve looking for a couple more items. But that reserve, they have a reserve account that has $3296.96 in it. And Article 72 of last year's town meeting does allow you to expend it as well. Those are reserve accounts that, according to the treasurer, I got another email from her today, that can be spent on anything town-related. You're thinking of the trust funds, the cemetery trust funds, you can only use the interest for maintenance of those cemeteries. But this reserve account that you have that $3296 in can be used.
Yeah, did she find the reserve account? Because to me, it's not a reserve account. To me, there was a combination of what they'd given you out of the six cemeteries.
So you have, you have trust funds on your cemeteries, and those are the ones that you talked about today?
Yeah, which is the six.
But you have, the cemetery has a reserve account that has $3296.92 in it, and anything you don't spend goes in that. So with, assuming the...
Year-to-year accumulation of rolling over, carry forwards.
So if the warrant article in June passes for the cemetery committee, assuming you zero out this year's $1,027, you'll have $6,096.92, and that's all money that, assuming it's appropriated in June, that can be spent.
See, in my understanding with those reserve funds, and I've tried to explain before, that they were accumulation of the six that we...
They're not trust, you're talking about, you're talking about trust accounts, there's a difference.
Listen to what I'm finishing, okay?
Okay.
Jen, no problem, I understand. Well, I understand, this is several years ago, bringing forward, these six came with money. All the six funds we have now came with money. Different funds, different years, some accumulated, some didn't. Some started at $10, some started at $200. We hadn't been able to use or touch any of their funds because there was never enough to accumulate. Obviously, over the years, probably the last 10, maybe, this, these funds have accumulated because we haven't touched them, because these six cemeteries haven't been taken care of. My only issue with this is that I want to make 110% certainty that there, that, because that, those funds are designated for those six. That's what the state says. I want to make sure with 100% certainty that we are not digging in to their monies.
And just, so I can be clear again, so there are, there is a reserve account.
Right.
And there are those six trust cemetery accounts.
Right, and they should have their own.
Those six accounts are, you're 100% right, that can only be used for the maintenance of those accounts as people have left them to the town.
Exactly.
Over the years, the interest can only be used to maintain the cemeteries. You are 100% right.
And I, I thought that was, I thought that $3,000 was part of theirs.
No.
That's why I'm saying, I want to make sure 110% that this is...
And I can show you the information, we can sit down and go through it, but they're unrelated.
Where I deal with another cemetery here in town, it's 30%, you go over that and they'll be looking for you.
What I understand this account is, is if you didn't spend $50 this year, it would get carried forward to next year.
Right.
50 and 50 and 100 and kept carrying over.
About the same time, about 10 years ago, when I was getting done off in conservation, I actually made the motion that these funds be carried over, because that time, we had no money to take care of, even now, it's slim.
And that's where your $300 has come from?
Right, we had no money to take care of the carryovers, and that's, somebody told me it was the best thing we could do, because we don't have that kind of funding. If you had, if I had to go right now and order everything that's broken and take care of everything we've got, we'd be in trouble.
Well, I just wanted to be able to show you that there is some more funds out there that if you know is good.
I knew about the 32, but like I said, I thought that was part of the accumulation of those six.
So if you look at like this year's warrant and from Warren Finance, so to see if the town will vote to carry forward the following fund balances, cemetery fund is the first one on there, so these are not the trust funds at all, they're...
Okay, I just want to make sure.
So that's the good news.
That's the good news. The bad news is that they, 319 just doesn't have the time, energy, or resources to maintain that. If you want to go in per state law and take care of the veterans, so be it. I did put something on, I'm running a slide, I didn't run it in the Smart Shopper, I wasn't sure if you wanted to spend money on it, because Lois spoke to me shortly after the meeting that she had an individual that came forward, so I didn't want to spend...
I had somebody who came forward after last week's meeting, and Ed was here, he can verify that part. He's willing to take care of that this year, and we are gonna work, I guess we're gonna try to work something out, whether it was volunteering on his behalf, or whether I have to take from this particular fund area. We'll have to work that out at this point to see what he actually wants. She tried to get a hold of him once or twice, and still hasn't gotten back to her.
Because now that all the board, all you've authorized in the past is reimbursement for mileage.
Right.
I mean, if it becomes a paid position at some point, you're gonna have to advertise it and follow the law as far as, so it's just mileage is the most that the individual would get.
It's a matter of how he wants to go forth, or how you guys want to go forth. Now, does that matter what type he wants? In other words, does it matter if it's $500 or $1,000? When does that actually become a pay?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't think the board, and, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you pay mileage for your current cemetery workers, correct, that go out?
The one that doesn't live in Acton.
Okay, so you pay, but if somebody, but you don't pay anybody to maintain a cemetery, and that's what...
No.
And I don't think, I mean, I don't think this individual, I would think if they start putting a compensation on it, they'd want to advertise it like everything else, to be fair.
Because the only thing to be fair about is those six. Those six, when we work on those, those are the six that we're entitled to refund back. In other words, when we use gas on that, when we use anything, our equipment or the equipment that we just bought, which is a, which is a gas lawnmower, when we use it on those six cemeteries, that's the only thing that gets refunded back to us if we happen not to catch you guys, because that's part of the six that need to be taken care of. Some of them have veterans and some don't.
So the question to him is, is he willing to volunteer and take a mileage reimbursement if the board will offer him that?
I...
If not, we can advertise it some more.
What did you assume, I hate to use that word, what did you think last week?
I didn't think he was really gonna charge us anything.
I didn't think so either, but I don't want to say definitely not.
I don't want to assume that 100%, but, I mean, he led us to believe that he would take care of it.
Yeah, and I'm not sure we can pay someone without advertising it properly.
Right. And I just want to, you know, I just want to make sure that you, you know, versus advertising it, we're all set. I mean, either way, we'd have been all set, it was just the idea, it's very frustrating, because here we are, getting the owners to take responsibility of what they have on their property, getting some of their, getting some of the people that actually co-own, I call it co-own, because even though you own the property, sometimes you co-own the cemetery with a person that may live here and may not live here in town, that you co-own it, because they're, they get an investment in it. So I call it kind of co-ownerships, but I've got the ones that basically they have their lands, taking care of it and taking an interest. It's kind of disappointing that they're not taking an interest.
Wow.
Considering, Ed, when that was signed, you were part of that signature, what was the stipulation at that point?
I don't remember, that was three, four, or five years ago, so...
But I figured I'd ask, because that was the one question I didn't direct to you back then, and I know you were part of the signatures, so...
They miss like anything, if someone says they can take care of it, and something comes along and they can't, so...
Oh, I know, things change.
Things change.
And that's the same way with the warrants and the articles and so forth.
I mean, you can't force someone to take care of something if they physically don't have the manpower to do it.
Or that they even signed up to do it to begin with.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we've got, we've got four more we just found, so, and working on the ones on the town farm road, that was an interesting adventure, so...
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Atlantic broadband agreement.
So it just came, came through, I sent it to you guys electronically, so just a kind of FYI, if you can look through it, they redlined, changed some of Brad's?
I did not see the red lines on the pop-up.
Yeah, he didn't, you have to look for the comments they made, like, on the side, he didn't actually redline them.
Oh, the side didn't show up.
Yeah, he didn't...
I'll need a, yeah.
Okay, I'll get your hard copy. He, they liked some of his recommended changes, but not all of them, so...
Okay.
We can, I'll print you off hard copies, we can look at it for next week. Do you want me to send that to Brad to let him review and give you a synopsis of what he recommended based on what they agreed to change?
Purchasing policy.
Okay, so I think we have this one ready now. The last concern last week was increasing it to $1,000 for competitive pricing, so now it reads, "For all purchases of goods and services over $1,000, department heads are required to solicit no less than three competitive prices in writing." And then the competitive price, anything in excess of $5,000 goes by sealed bid, same process. So that's the only change the treasurer made, if you want to review that?
Need a motion?
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchasing policy as amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
So we'll get this out to the department heads, it takes effect immediately?
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes. Downstairs office.
Okay, so I sat down with the treasurer and code enforcement. He thinks that, assuming the board, I mean, I heard you say that you were in favor, right? You were in favor of creating this office, other than the rec stuff that's down there, I think everything else would stay. She says that we can allocate $1,500 out of building maintenance, and that would cover the door, the new door that's gonna have to go in there, the flooring, building maintenance type things, and 500 from his budget for other miscellaneous to phone. It may not get the office done for 2,000, but it's gonna have to get him into the next fiscal year, because that's about the most that can be spent out of this year, based on what's not already appropriated. And the first thing that we'll have to buy out of that 1,500 is something for the rec, some sort of cabinet.
Yep.
And we're gonna tell them that it's going in the gym?
Yep. I gave Peter a heads up, so he's just been kind of...
Peter, oh, Baxter?
Yeah, does the cleaning over there.
So it's not gonna be a, I mean, a grand total, it's over the 500, so it's for the debit card use.
Are we supposed to make a motion on that? We'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the debit card purchase for up to 2,000 for the CEO office downstairs.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Warrant Article 41 recommendation.
I'm actually gonna have you do 41 and 72, just for clarity, if you don't mind. So 41 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $147,460 for shared road accounts to be expended as followed. Sand and salt, $132,422. Public works, building and equipment, $15,038. Looking for a motion?
Make a motion, we approve Article 41 as written.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Two?
Two does, yep.
Opposed is one?
One.
And then... 72.
Seventy, okay, 72, yep.
Did I say 72?
Yep, you did.
Okay. It's a carry forward, do you have that in front of you?
Yep.
So I only have half of it.
To see if the town will vote to carry forward the following fund balances and allow the balance carried forward to be appropriated to the designated department for the ensuing year. Cemetery Fund, District 1 and 2, Road Surfacing and Reconstruction, District 1 and 2, Summer Maintenance, FEMA, Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund, Forestry and Conservation Committee, Gravel Processing, and LRAP Funds. And to carry forward but not appropriate unless previously appropriated in other articles the following fund balances. Ambulance Reserve Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, Dams Capital Improvement Fund, Forestry Reserve Fund, Fire Department Capital Improvement Fund, Truck, Recreation Capital Improvement Fund. The following non-fiduciary funds will automatically carry forward and be expensed as necessary. Neighbors Helping Neighbors Fund, Mary Grant Fund, Fuel Assistance Donation Fund, Fire Department Grants, Donations, Scholarships Fund, Gym Donations Fund, all other unexpended fund balances and revenues to lapse into the undesignated fund. Lapsed school balances to be designated for school funding only. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve Article 72 as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you, Tom.
I'm set. And so you'll make those changes for the final signing?
Yeah, about that, down there a little more.
Oh, that's sound further, okay. Siding project.
So we've been advertising again, we're not getting any bites, I don't know what you want, I mean, it's essentially Memorial Day weekend, I mean, we can run it another week or so, and I've paid...
Are we allowed to approach companies to give us quotes?
Yeah, I don't know if so or not, I mean, it's, there's still gonna be, still gonna be a sealed bid, I mean, we've advertised it, I've got it in the Smart Shopper, it's the most that we wanted to spend on it, cable website, I mean, this is a busy time of year for construction people, I think. I've kind of done word-of-mouth, I know they've mentioned it downstairs.
Okay.
Do you want to spend any more money, put it in the paper, put it somewhere else, or, at this point, it has to be spent by June 30th, so I'm getting...
Getting tight on time.
That is.
By the time now, you get, well, you could put it in one other paper, I guess, wouldn't cost us a whole heck of a lot.
All right, I'll have to advertise it.
Okay, Melsom Watershed Dam Coalition member.
It's a follow-up from last week. I'm going to assume that we had some communication, um, miscommunication. I thought she was going to come in to meet with you guys, but once again, this is the property owner that lives on Melsom. She's owned property there since the 80s. Uh, she's interested in serving on the Melsom Watershed Dam Coalition as a member. I can reach back out to her and see what, what happened.
Okay. Marijuana order.
So where do we stand on marijuana? See if I did, as I thought I was supposed to. You tell me what you were expecting for tonight.
I was expecting to just sign.
Excellent. All right, so what I heard last week, until Ed called me midweek, what I heard last week was you were going to have a special election on July 17th from 8:00 to 8:00, and you were going to vote on one question. Shall an ordinance entitled "Ordinance Limiting Home Cultivation of Marijuana for Personal Adult Use" be enacted? And that is the one document with that one, it's all that was on there, about the, um, what was the key word? Domicile.
Domicile.
Yep. And you, we moved the where as's up at the beginning, um, talking about the plants and what they could have. I mean, is there, is that?
Yeah, I mean, we...
I know you had the public hearing.
Yeah, a couple of members of the Marijuana Committee came up to us after the public hearing. Had some conversation about the possibility of a second question. Second question being, well, we didn't really put the second question together, but it would be, in essence, um...
The ban?
Yeah.
Would you like a ban?
Basically, it's the ban the state has already put in. You know, do we, you know, would we, do we ratify that or whatever? So there was, there was some talk about the possibility of a second question to, just to kind of seal that one forward. I'm betwixt in between whether we should have that second question or not. It may confuse, and that's a big thing I'm worried about, that it may confuse the voters. The state has already put the ban in, so if we are asking them about a ban again, it may confuse them on the particular question that we're moving forward. The flip side of it is, it would also get the pulse of the town to see if there was ever such thing that they would want to opt in later on. So I think for now, I'm just as happy going with what we have right now. You know, like I said, we did talk to a couple of members of the, of the committee. I highly treasure what the committee says and what they've done. I can see their point, but I think I'm really, I don't want to confuse the issue, is the big thing, so... And I think the way we have it written right now is clear and concise. There's a lot of steps that someone would have to go through in order to try to get us to opt in, get the town to opt in, as well as a vote, so, um, you know, and that opt-in is for commercial, so... The residential still stays the same. You're still going to have your three plants, your 12 immature plants in your...
Unlimited seedlings.
Unlimited seedlings, so, and that's not going to stop, so... And that wouldn't stop whether we ask that question or not, so, um, I'm, I guess I'm going to hold my hat on, on the confusion part. I don't want to confuse the voters. I want to make it clear and concise with what we have now, so...
And I agree. At first, I was siding with the ban, just to get a pulse and a number, but when it comes down to it, if somebody wants to opt in and get a petition started, it's, it's going to be measured there as well. On the other side, I don't want to confuse any voters.
I'm signing.
All right, there you are.
Thank you.
Order voted. It is hereby ordered that the question set forth below be placed on a referendum ballot for the election to be held on July 17th, 2018, and that an attested copy of this order is placed on file with the Town Clerk of Acton, Maine. Shall an ordinance entitled "Ordinance Limiting Home Cultivation of Marijuana for Personal Doubt Use" be enacted?
Make a motion that we sign the order.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor.
Remind me again what day we decided in the public hearing. I can go back and look, but...
The 10th?
10th.
Oh.
Does that make a difference?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
It's draft.
Do we have one that doesn't say draft on it?
Um, somewhere.
Okay.
My office, maybe, at the end of it.
Well...
I never know. I don't know what you guys are going to do, so I'll, um...
We'll sign this one.
Thank you.
Where it's, yeah, and then...
Well, you don't need to sign that one.
We can still, well, it just says that it is signed and we can word for word.
Hang out for a minute or two after. The 10th.
July 10.
July 10.
7:00 PM. Mileage policy.
So, to start the discussion, code enforcement, um, is spending an excessive amount of work tracking mileage. This is, um, something that would only pertain to this particular office, and I guess it's something that I need you guys to think about and figure out if it's something you would want to do for the upcoming fiscal year. The way that it works now, based on your policy, is that you pay the federal rate of mileage, the employees' work-related. His are the only ones that range in the $4,000, $5,000, $6,000, $700 a month. It is extremely time-consuming for him to track everything, and he feels like he spends a good part of his day trying, a good part of his days and months trying to do that. I've averaged out the last three years of what we've paid him for mileage, um, to kind of give you something to think about. He would like the board to consider turning it into a monthly stipend. For him, that frees up the time from having to track every single mile to and from everywhere he goes. I mean, this is, you know, hundreds and hundreds of miles. There's a downfall to him, because right now, it's a reimbursement, so for all of us that get reimbursed mileage, we don't have to claim reimbursements. If you switch this to a stipend, he will have to pay taxes on it. And he knows that, and he's willing to do that, um, because it's that much of a hassle with the amount of miles. You know, some, I was looking at some of his, um, his last one, it's $703. If I divide that by the rate, it's over 1,200 miles in one month, so you don't have to make any decisions tonight. If you decide to move forward, it's not something that would start until July. So it prints you what it looks like for the last three years. The first one, um, for those out there, it's $556 was the average over 12 months. The year before, it was $568.64. Right now, we're through, uh, just the end of April, that he's turned in $403.92 is the average. This is the current policy. So if you decided to do something, um, you would want to make sure it pertains only to that department. I mean, there's no one else in town that even comes close to that mileage anyways. But, and certainly he's willing to come and speak to you guys. If you'd like.
Okay. FEMA funds.
So Michelle sent you guys an email reminding you that there was a warrant article every year that basically says, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate revenues received by FEMA claims during the upcoming fiscal year into the Emergency Disaster Reserve Account. Said funds are to be utilized at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen to restore budgets of the various departments for expenses incurred during a declared event." Unfortunately, sometimes it takes FEMA a while to circle back around. On October 31st, 2017, a declared event occurred. The windstorm took down many trees and branches and left a majority of Acton without power for several days. FEMA is going to match 90% of reimbursement of those costs incurred. However, the only thing that hasn't been done, based on the road commissioner's, is the chipping. So as I understand it, and David, you may want to come up here, um, in order to be reimbursed, the work has to be done by June 25th of 18. So this is from the treasurer. "I'm requesting the use of the funds to hire a subcontractor to do the chipping, which would cost $3,000. FEMA would reimburse 90% of that. Dave Winchell is looking for prices from different local vendors that offer a chipping service and agreed to schedule the chipping before the deadline if the board approves the use of the Emergency Disaster Reserve." And then she reminded you of the article, but you guys all saw that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's been authorized by the townspeople. It's just really a circle. David, do you want to give them any more information?
Yeah, I, uh, I contacted a couple of different contractors today. There's not a lot of guys in the area. The problem is, is the amount of brush. They're supposed to be giving me prices here by the end of this week, I'm hoping. And what I'm, what I'm going to try to do is, I'm going to call Bob up to the dump, transfer station, and see if I maybe can coordinate both of them at the same time. That way, then we can get him here to do it, because the piles, it's a pretty good-sized pile, but it's not huge. So to get him here, it's, so I'm trying to figure out a way to make it work. So I got two people giving me prices now. Um, like I said, hopefully by the end of the week, I'll have a price for them. I did explain to them that it had to be done before June 30th, so...
25th.
25th.
Yeah, and I was, I didn't have a chance to ask Michelle why...
She told me the 30th.
Yeah, it says, it says the 25th, but we can check with her. That's minor. But is it because of FEMA? Who's, I mean, obviously, we have that article every year, so why does it have to be?
I have no idea. It's the first time we've come into this issue.
Yeah, we've never had to use the FEMA reimbursement stuff.
Is there chipping that needs to be done on the other side of town with the, the other road commissioner?
No, no.
The transfer station.
I know you said the transfer station.
We haul all our brush down to the town shed.
Okay.
And when we did the, uh, the brush removal during that storm in October, what we did is we piled it in one pile for that storm, and, um, that's what they're going to cover.
So you're going to keep everything separate as far as?
It's already been measured. I met with FEMA already. We measured it all up. They've got all their tallies now. They just want to see a pile of chips now. So I just figured that if I can, and we've done it before, like Simpson normally is the guy that does it. He's local right in Sanford, and, um, he likes to make it worth his while to haul, you know, the machines, 50-ton, to bring it up, to have enough work for it to do. So what I try to do is I try to line it up with Bob at the transfer station. It's paid by two different accounts, obviously. You know, the transfer station takes care of their, their pot, then we take care of our pot. It's just making it worth their while coming. So that's what my objective is right now.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the board needs to actually make a motion to authorize the treasurer to do that, if it's something you want to do.
Is this reimbursement of the FEMA money?
It's to authorize the expenditure out of the FEMA expense account. The warrant article is on the bottom.
Okay. Make a motion that we authorize the treasurer to expend the FEMA money for chipping as outlined.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor. Give that back to her. Tax abatement.
So we have just one. This is, um, on Tax Map 113, Lot 4. O'Donnell's went out. It looks like the building was inspected and the value was adjusted to account for the current quality and condition of the property based on the April 1st date, so there's a drop in valuation.
Want to read it?
How much should I be? Just kind of, do we say the person's name? All right.
It's public information.
The Town of Acton, let's put our glasses on so I can really see here. The Town of Acton has reviewed the 2017 assessed value of your Acton property. As a result of our review, we have granted an abatement on Acton map lot 113-004. The reasons for the abatement are, the building was inspected and the value was adjusted to account for the current quality and condition of the property. The revised valuation tax and the original valuation and tax are displayed in the table below. Total real estate tax, should I read that out, was $5,345.90. Revised, it is $4,536.70.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We grant the abatement.
I'll second that.
All in favor. Poll permit.
Ashbury Lane. You guys all saw this via email.
Yeah.
It's like they're adding one to put new power to a house down there?
Okay. So adding one poll to Ashbury Lane. This is CMP.
Yeah, it looked good. There was no issues.
No. Do we have a motion to allow the permit?
Make a motion. We sign the poll permit for Ashbury Lane.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor. Is there an actual place to sign?
Yep.
Oh, there it is. Treasurer memo.
Is it the board's wish to put a non-essential spending freeze on after May 31st? You certainly don't have to. Some boards have, some boards haven't. Essentially, the treasurer puts together a memo to the department heads, you know, our fiscal year ends June 30th. The idea behind that is that if it's, if anything not essential after May 31st has to get board approval. You know, the, the idea is so that we're not just spending down the budgets just to empty out the, you know, equipment lines. Whatever we can put back in the undesignated fund balance is always helpful for townspeople. So she drafted this memo. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you guys agree with it or not, or you can just let them spend...
Would you like to read it?
Oh, sure.
There you go.
Taking turns tonight.
Yeah.
Kind of the same memo we do every year. Please let this memo serve as a reminder that all purchases that ought to be paid from this current fiscal year need to be made by May 31st. After that date, the Board of Selectmen have imposed a spending freeze for non-essential purchases. For essential purchases after May 31st, please obtain an invoice at the time of order for any purchases and submit the invoice before June 30th to the town, to the treasurer's office to be paid from the 2018 budget year. For non-essential purchases made May 31st, 2018, prior authorization in writing from the majority of the board is required. This is something, like I say, we've done every year since I've been on the board, I think.
Between, you know, the undesignated fund balance and just the idea that we try to, you know, our auditors are ready on June 30th. We don't want to be ordering a bunch of staples the third weekend, waiting for the bill, so...
Yep.
I mean, if you didn't need it this long, then, you know.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Fine with me. Thank you.
Yeah, buying something?
The road department, we're still going to be able to continue on buying our stuff like we normally do. That's not...
If it's your normal, everyday job, yes, but I wouldn't go ordering, like, the 20 hats you didn't need, 20 vests.
It's the same thing as last year.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So yes, have her send it out?
Yes. Sign annual town warrant.
So, um, two things we have to, so we need to put in the Article 41, which was the two, the two-to-one vote, and then we need to add Article 73. Is there anything else? Ms. Williams, you want to come up? I asked him to proof it. I sent it out this morning to a bunch of you. I'm not sure. Trying to get any last-minute things done, so that after the meeting, if you can make a motion to sign it, we can stay and sign it, so we can get it posted.
Okay.
Can I have your copy? Because I don't have one in front of me, and he doesn't. Is that the whole thing?
Yep. Did you get mine, too?
All right, what you got?
Uh, Williams, uh, Morton Finance. There's one other item that we missed when we went over this, is in Article 72 on page 32. We had, when we had interviewed the, uh, road commissioner for District 2, he mentioned the fact that the gravel processing is no longer necessary, that the machine is old and it's more trouble than it is worth, and so that was listed as ones that should not be appropriated.
So...
That was a carry, carry forward?
And on the, it's listed there each year.
Oh, okay.
And this year, he said, honestly...
Which one are you calling it? I'm sorry.
Gravel processing, Article 72.
Okay, so it's on the original 72.
On the original.
But in your recommendation, it's not on there.
It should have been on there, because we voted for it on there.
You voted to move it forward?
We voted to not, to carry it forward, but not appropriate any money.
Why would you carry it?
But, okay, so wait, wait, wait. So 72, to see if the town will vote to carry forward the following article, following, gravel processing was on there. To carry forward, to be appropriate, all right. So your motion was to see if the town could vote...
Well, first, we tried to just get it off entirely, and then...
Well, and which it is off.
Beg pardon?
It's, so I don't have it as part of your recommendation. You believe it should be listed there?
It should be listed that no monies go out for that particular line item.
So it being gone is correct?
Yeah.
So it being gone is correct, because, so it's gone.
Except at the bottom of page 32, unless I'm misreading it. It's not listed there.
It's not supposed to be if you don't want money to go to it.
Forward.
Right.
They took it out.
They did take it out.
Yeah, I took it out. So it says the Warrant Finance, and stay, stay a minute afterward, so you can see the final proof, but it says the Warrant Finance's recommendation was to see if the town will vote to carry forward the following fund balances. You had Cemetery, you had District 2 Summer, uh, District 2 Surfacing and Reconstruction, District 2 Summer Maintenance, FEMA and LRAP.
Yes.
So we took District 1 off, we took the gravel off, and we took the forestry and conservation off.
Okay.
Is that, we can review the tape when you're done.
That's correct. At worst comes to worst, I just got finished talking with Mr. Winchell. He said we can do as an amendment on the floor if it's all confusing.
But we'll double-check the video, too, if you want.
Thank you.
So can we motion to sign it as with those two things, two additions, and who can sign it right after the meeting, so I can type that in real quick?
Make a motion, we sign the town warrant pertinent to the two amendments that we have.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Assessing Field Work.
Just an FYI that O'Donnell's has five employees out. They've picked up all of the April 1st work. They're making sure that everybody's in there for the upcoming tax, all building permits and everything. So there are five individuals out there in town. They all have name tags. They have letters with the town seal on it. The sheriff's department has all their license plates. They have a lot of, what do you call it, identification on them. So they are out, if you've gotten a building permit or fire, or anything's happened in the last year, they're checking properties and measuring and getting everything up to par, so they are in the field.
What if you missed them and you still want them to come?
They should leave, they leave.
Would they leave a car? Well, I'm just, you know, well, I'm just saying.
Well, no, I mean, it's true. No, a perfect example, and that was the, that was the thing.
People who are working all day and they're coming during the day.
With the last abatement, I mean, if nobody's home, it's a good point. If nobody's home, and you look at the house, and, I mean, they're going to assume that it's 100% done inside, and what happened with that last abatement is that it wasn't. I mean, it looked real pretty from the outside, but because nobody was home and they couldn't get in, they assumed it was 100%. The property owner called them back. Good of him. They went in and saw.
I took it a different way.
It wasn't done at all, so we ended up abating it, so.
I took it a different way.
Okay, thanks.
So you could call them, O'Donnell's.
Yeah, missed them.
That kind of miss, a different miss.
Chances are, if they come out, your evaluation is going up.
I know, but...
We have their number if anybody wants it.
Okay, so last item, no Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, June 12th, because of the 8:00, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM elections, and no Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, July 3rd.
And how about Tuesday, July 17th? So we can have a...
And Tuesday, July 17th. I forgot about that.
We'll see what's going on, and you guys might consider a Wednesday meeting if necessary.
Yep, well, look at that. Public Comment.
I was going over the bridge, and maybe David can answer this question. I was going over the road bridge down at the hopper. New Hampshire side's got two lines going across. I don't know if they're measuring speed. I don't know if they're measuring who's going across it. Are they actually going to do something, or is this part of what's happening?
I think that's a dig, I think that's a dig safe, Mac, because it goes all the way down to the other end.
Okay, because I didn't know, and I happened to see it, and I go, ah, somebody's going to do something.
It pertains to the bridge at all. I think they're doing ditch work.
Okay, because I didn't know if New Hampshire finally decided we'd come up to par. Thanks.
Seeing no more public comment, I will move on to the announcements and upcoming meetings. The Board of Selectmen are here. One of this, one of us will be here, the first, second, and third Thursdays of each month, from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And to say first, second, and third Thursday, if I'm just going to repeat that. And I think we're all done for the month, right?
Right.
But if you need us for any other time, just give us a call. We'll work something in. Road Committee, oh, sorry, 5:22. The Road Committee's meeting tonight at 6:00. May 23rd, we have the library hosting a presentation on loons at the Wakefield Opera House from 2:00 to 4:00. That's in partnership with AWA and the Gaffney Library. It'll be really neat. You should make it if you can. May 23rd, special town meeting at 7:00 PM, and directly after will be the candidate's night at 7:30. May 24th, the Cemetery Committee meets at 5:00. May 28th, the transfer station is closed from Memorial Day. May 29th, the Board of Selectmen meet at 5:00 PM. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Good night.